Okay, it is now 7:40 and thank you for letting us take that little break to let the people out in the lobby come in. I would like to call to order the general session. This is the regular general session for the June 25th, 2019 board meeting. And as stated in the agenda, it was immediately following the third reading of the general fund budget. So at this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do I have a motion to call this meeting to order?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Any questions or comments, Board? We'll take a vote. All in favor of opening the general session, June 25th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. I would like to notify you that we are in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act by we have notified the media of the date, time, and place of this meeting. We would also like to notify you that the district tapes this meeting for accuracy in preparing the minutes. And at this time, I'd like to call on Dr. Guyton, who will give our invocation. Dr. Guyton?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you for the safe travel here. Thank you for warm weather and sunny skies, Lord. These past few weeks, we got a chance to spend some time with some of the graduates, Lord. And so this is just an intercessory prayer on behalf of them, on behalf of their families. We pray for favor for them. We pray that during this time of opportunity, during this time of challenge, during this time of transition, that you find favor with them, that you show them their path. And as a collective body, we pray that we have prepared them well. We pray that we have come alongside their families to prepare them to go forth in the world and to serve, to make this world better and to shape and mold future generations to come. We thank you for this time and we just ask for your blessings. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Guyton. That was so well said. I would like to say graduation was just such a wonderful time and to see those thousands of students cross that stage was just so moving. So we love that time of year. Ms. Hill, do we have any media present? Okay, thank you. Board, in front of you, you have an agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Are there any questions or comments regarding the agenda, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. Board, in your packet, you were included the minutes for the May 15th, the May 21st, and the June 4th, 2019 meetings. You have been provided copies of those minutes. Other than the corrections that have already been provided and made, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of any of those three meetings? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted and received. At 11:00, or reports and action items from executive session, do I hear a motion to approve 35 certified recommendations for the 2019-2020 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board accept the recommendations from Dr. Little and the senior leadership team on the 35 certified positions for the 2019-2020 academic year.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Board, are there any questions or comments regarding those 35 positions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. At this time, Mr. Stacy, how many positions do we have left to fill?
Thirty-nine and a half.
So if y'all know of anybody looking for a teaching position, see Mr. Stacy. I'm sorry?
Or half a person.
Or half a person, if you know of half a person. Board, do I hear a motion to approve one administrative recommendation for the 2019-2020 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board accept Dr. Little and the senior leadership team's recommendation for the one administrative position for the 2019-2020 academic year.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions or comments regarding this position? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the one administrative position for 2019-2020 school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. In executive sessions, Board members discussed the relocation of Lexington Middle School. As you may remember from the December 2018 meeting, Dr. Kyle Guyton recused himself from discussion or action regarding the relocation of Lexington Middle School, and he was not part of the discussion in executive session. It was just purely discussion and no action is required as a result of this discussion. At this time, we'll have honors and achievements, and I'd like to ask Dr. Little to step down. We have a lot of people here and this is exciting. So let me switch gears. Okay. We celebrate successes of many kinds during the honors and achievements portion of our monthly board meeting. We recognize the significant achievements of our students and employees, as well as the contributions of and partnerships with our business partners and community organizations. Tonight's honorees include a state champion softball team, and I think I see them right there on the front row, our all-star spring sports at all of our schools, our outstanding band directors, and those are only just a few. So stick around. Many of our honorees recently graduated and cannot be with us tonight. They've already arrived at college for early check-in, and many, I do believe, are on family vacations. So hopefully, we won't have, we'll call a lot of names, but they may not all be here. But we will make sure that they get their certificates. When you came in tonight, there was a proof positive newsletter that should feature the honorees tonight. It was on the signing table. If you didn't get one, they will be out there when you leave, and I think it may have some pictures of you guys in there, so that's always a good thing. And you are more than welcome to take extra copies if you need them. Audience, you should know that if you try to follow along in the newsletter tonight, you may need to skip back and forth from page to page as they are not in the same order as we will announce tonight's honors and achievements. In addition, we ask that you please stay until we finish recognizing all of tonight's award recipients, as each award winner deserves our undivided attention. And in order to accommodate our youngest honorees and their families, once we finish, we will give everyone a chance to leave if you so desire, and then we will resume our meeting afterwards. But of course, you're all welcome to stay and spend your summers with us. And Dr. Little is already in position. So honorees, when you hear your names, go ahead and come on up and stand with Dr. Little, and we will tell the audience all about you and your achievements and your team's achievements. So we are going to start tonight with some state champions. We begin with the state champion softball team from Lexington High School, the 5A State Softball Champions. And I think I was told to go ahead and let the trophy come on up, so everybody can be admiring it while we call your names, and I think we're going to put that in the picture. So members of this championship team include Lexington High's Ashley Cossey, J.C. Fleming, Riley Ford, Sarah Gordon, Hannah Kumiyama, Ally Light, Skylar Logston, Megan Maisy, Alyssa McCraw, Madison Montgomery, Samantha Montgomery, Perry Rule Yard, Jessica Sin, Savannah Shannon, Cassidy St. George, Sage Stanley, Maggie Taylor, Aleah Waters, and Callie Williams. And last but not least, they are joined by Pleasant Hills Middle's Madison Carwell. And at this time, I would like to call their coaches up if they're all here. Y'all come on up. And I'm going to be reading about all of you, so just turn your listening ears on, because this is some good stuff. In the best-of-three showdown against Burns High, the Wildcats came back from one game down to win the 5A State Championship. In game one, Lexington lost 12 to 8, returning to game two by the score of 5 to 1. Despite being down in game three by three runs, the Wildcats rallied to win the state's, excuse me, the school's first softball title since 2001, led by winning pitcher Ally Light. And Ally, hold your hand up. There's Ally. Lexington stopped Burns from scoring in the final five innings of the game. On top of that stellar defense, and ladies, raise your hands when I call your name, Hannah, Jessica, and Sage all hit home runs. Lexington finished the season, are you ready? This is a good number, with a 26 to 4 record. And if you remember, this is our district's second straight softball championship since White Knoll won last year and Lexington won this year, so that is just wonderful. So y'all, let's stand up and give these state champions a round of applause.
Having played baseball at Lexington, we were challenged by the softball team one time to get in the batter's box against a softball pitcher. I'll never do that again. I was told there were three strikes. I have no clue. I never saw the softball. And it was twice the size of the baseball. Never saw it.
Congratulations, ladies. Now, we're going to move over to track and field for the 5A State Track and Field Champion and the South Carolina Coaches Association of Women's Sports 5A Female Track and Field Player of the Year. Would White Knoll High's Kanaya Johnson, and did I say your name right, Kanaya? Oh, good. Come on up. Let's just talk about her, because she's got a lot going on. It's not a stretch to say that Kanaya took track and field by storm this season. As a freshman, she broke records, won a state title, and picked up a Player of the Year Award. At the state track and field meet, Kanaya won the 100-meter dash with a time of 11.66 seconds, breaking her own school record. She set another personal best in the 200-meter dash with 24.2 seconds, finishing second at state in a close race. Propelled by her speed, the Timberwolves track team landed in 11th place overall at the state meet, their best finish in school history. So in recognition of her outstanding performance, y'all, we're still talking about her. We're not through. In recognition of her outstanding performance all season long, and this is probably one of the nicest things here, the South Carolina Coaches Association of Women's Sports named Kanaya the 5A Female Track and Field Player of the Year. Let's give her a round of applause. Congratulations. Now, we're going to have a clash of the Carolina Boys Soccer All-Stars and a clash of the Carolinas Girls Soccer All-Stars and the South Carolina High School Soccer Coaches Association North-South Soccer Classic Boys All-Stars and South Carolina High School Soccer Coaches Association North-South Soccer Classic Girls All-Stars. Now, we move to the soccer field to find our next honorees. Senior soccer players from four Lexington District 1 schools received invitations to All-Star Games featuring the best players from North and South Carolina. First, let us recognize our clash of the Carolina players, which includes Riverbluff High's Jaden Cordis and Peyton Miller on the boys' side. Is that you two?
That's who it is.
Yeah, congratulations. And Riverbluff High's Jordan Mieschow for the girls. Is Jordan here? Okay, just you two. Peyton, just the boys. Peyton finished the year, well, listen to this. Peyton finished the year with five goals and 10 assists, while Jaden scored 17 goals plus three assists. Teammates voted both seniors as the most outstanding players for the whole season. So congratulations, guys. And even though she's not here, Jordan scored...
Gentlemen.
Oh, yeah.
We missed your whole thing, y'all.
So Riverbluff Girl Soccer Team, leading the Riverbluff Girl Soccer Team to a region championship, Jordan scored seven goals with five assists. So let's give her a round of applause, even though she's not here. Okay, now we go to our North-South Soccer Classic All-Stars. Senior All-Stars include Gilbert High's Angel Baraja, Angel here, Lexington High's Nolan Pollard, and White Knoll High's Jacob Kuhn on the boys' side. And on the girls' side, we have Riverbluff High's Sophia Monsma, and White Knoll High's Ashlyn Simon and Kaylee Williams. Are they here? Well, we're not going to take their photographs. I don't have to read that. Angel finished the season with 27 goals and 13 assists, as well as recognition as Region Player of the Year, leading Gilbert High to a region championship. A four-year starter, Nolan scored three goals and two assists this season for Lexington High. As White Knoll High's goalie, Jacob recorded 11 and 1/2 career shutouts and two team MVP awards for his junior and senior seasons. Sophia finished her Riverbluff High season with seven goals and five assists, winning a team leadership award. And finally, for White Knoll, Ashlyn scored 13 goals with 13 assists, making all-region this season, while Kaylee scored 48 goals and 16 assists her senior season, while also receiving Region Player of the Year. So let's congratulate these soccer players. And now, we're going to go over to the books side. These next two students may look familiar. We honored them earlier this year as national merit semifinalists, then finalists for national merit scholarships. We proudly announced tonight that Gilbert High's Haley Cubilis and Riverbluff High's Alexander Pendrus both won a college-sponsored merit scholarship. Are they here tonight? In recognition of excellent academic achievement, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation named Haley and Alexander winners of funding from their university of choice. Haley received a scholarship from the University of Alabama, where she plans to study international relations. Alexander plans to study physics with his scholarship from Clemson University. These scholarships provide between $500 and $2,000 each year for up to four years of undergraduate study. So let's give Haley and Alexander a round of applause. Each year, we recognize seniors eligible for the prestigious Palmetto Fellow Scholarship, which provides funding for four years of college. High academic achieving students must also score well on the ACT or SAT in order to earn this award. We have quite a few names to read. For that reason, we will get a group photograph of students who could make it tonight from each school before moving on to the next group, so we're going to do it by high school. So eligible students from Gilbert High include Zachary Elliott, Marina Fleming, Isabella Frelick, Harley Ann Hendricks, Haley Cubilis, Haley Leitner, Autumn Melton, Lucia Merida, Kyla Osborne, Christopher Phelps, Kirsten Price, Jacob Randall, there's one, Lydia Roxburg, and Annabelle Smith. So let's pause for this picture. Graduates from Lexington High receiving Palmetto Fellows include Hoda Abdallah, Allison Bell, Anna Blakely, excuse me, Anne Blakely, Bryson Burkett, Taryn Daniels, Joshua Dunham, Alex Fellers, Andrew Faust, Caroline Goodman, Savannah Griffin, Connor Hewson, Nathaniel Homer, Matthew Horton, Rebecca Huxtable, Chase Hyman, Mewe Jane, Jonathan Zazowski, Casey Jones, Zachary Kearney, Deborah Keifel, here we go, we've got one, Deborah Keifel, Paul Kim, Ryan Crick, Raymond Lynn, Joshua Little, Parker Lovett, Megan Maisy, you've got another one here, we've got two more. Matthew Miller, Henny Patel, Catherine Pierce, Nolan Pollard, Ariana Kitglass, Maggie Sally, Kevin Shaw, Adrian Soto, Madeline Stabler, William Thompson, Jarrett Turner, Emma Van Horn, Reeve Verma, Yang Vu, Caleb Wadden, Caleb West, Mackenzie Yoder, and Winnie Zing. Are there anybody else here? Well, congratulations to you three. From Pelearan High, Palmetto Fellow recipients include Charlie Almond, Leah Cogdal, Lauren Dinkie, Trevor Dunn, Taylor Johnson, and Mackenzie Renew. Now, we'll move to Riverbluff, and these students include Julia Bland, Ben Brown, William Butler, Jordan Carroll, Miley Carroll, Olivia Cook, Matthew Coolidge, Elena Deeny, Charles Dickerson, Ashton Dorr, Olivia Farah, Ashlyn Frick, Lauren Garrison, Taylor Garrison, Connor Gordon, Lauren Graves, Jackson Jeffcoat, Na Young Kim, Christina Lynn, Andrew Loftus, Devon Maston, Jared O'Berry, Manzi Patel, Megha Patel, Alexandra Pendrus, Catherine Pitts, Jeremiah Reeves, Reagan Ross, Drew Sander, Emma Scott, Thomas Shealy, Sajin Singh, Jared Springer, Jonathan Tan, Abigail Taylor, Sophie Taylor, Allison Torox, Joan Went, Cooper Whitley, Albert Zhu. And that's it for Riverbluff. Do we have any Riverbluff people here? Well, let's give them a round of applause. And last but definitely not least is White Knoll High. So we got a lot from White Knoll. We've got William Allison, Cheyenne Bailey, Jacob Ballington, Charles Beedenbow, Ben Brown, Ashley Crim, Eliza Elizondo, Isabella Estrada, Lillian Graber, Samantha Hoskins, Adam Kimzy, Michael Norris, Anna Palmer, Jacob Ray, Laura Rohr, Daniel Sides, Alicia Smith, oh, there's one, Taylor Smothers, and Kaylee Weaver. Great. So let's give White Knoll a round of applause. I just would like to say, this really represents so much hard work, and congratulations to these students. And it also is a lot of money for their parents that they're saving, so the students did a great job helping their parents out. So congratulations to all of these students. Our next award is quite a page-turner. Lexington High's Taylor McElwain wrote an award-winning poem inspired by the world around her. Is Taylor here tonight? Her poem entitled "Day Lilies in Darkness" won the prestigious Skylark Prize from the Poetry Society of South Carolina. Any student enrolled in a high school English program can enter a poem in the Skylark Contest. That is a big competition. In May, she accepted the $500 prize after reading her poem at the Poetry Society of South Carolina's annual meeting, and we look forward to reading more of Taylor's work in the future. Let's give her a round of applause. Now, we're going to go back to sports. We're going to switch over to the baseball diamond to find more senior All-Star players. Two Pelearan Panthers with top-notch talent played for North and South Carolina at the annual All-Star Baseball Games held on May 21st and May 22nd. Would Drew Boozer and Dylan Williamson come forward? Oh, there's one, come on up. They led the Panthers to the 3A playoffs for an overall record of 17 and 11. Drew played for the South Carolina 3A-4A team in the North-South All-Star Game. This season, he hit seven doubles and one homerun, as well as stealing 16 bases. He was invited to play the South Select team. Dylan pitched 59 innings for the Panthers this season with 103 strikeouts. So congratulations to Drew and Dylan. We're going to go back to softball now. We have a final group of senior All-Stars to recognize. All-Star players include Gilbert High's Savannah Rosson, Lexington High's Hannah Kumiyama, Riverbluff High's Kaylee Oswell, and White Knoll High's Hannah Goodwin and Andrea Lyon. These talented ladies played during the South Carolina Coaches Association of Women's Sports All-Star Games held on June 19th. Let me tell you about their senior seasons. As pitchers, Savannah pitched 128 innings with 241 strikeouts. Dr. Guyton, don't go up against her. Making her the career and single-season strikeout record holder at Gilbert. With a 581 batting average, Hannah hit 17 home runs and 17 doubles for Lexington this season. The Gators' 29-offensive MVP, Kayla, hit four home runs this season on top of a 359 batting average. In addition, White Knoll's two All-Stars both had record-breaking years. With 199 strikeouts and 17 wins this season, Andrea broke the school's wins record and finished second in the books for strikeouts with 898. Wow. Hannah launched five home runs this season to hold the school record for career home runs with 42. She also broke the school RBI record with 176. Congratulations, ladies. Now, we're going to move to staff recognitions, and we begin with two awards for Lexington District 1 employees. The Lexington District 1 Educational Office Professionals awarded Chief Human Resource Officer Mike Stacy and Executive Secretary Barbara Thompson annual honors this spring. Mr. Stacy won Administrator of the Year, while Ms. Thompson took the Office Professional of the Year Award. Mr. Stacy joined the district in 1999 as the first principal of newly-opened White Knoll High. In 2006, he transferred to Central Services, where he served as Director of Middle School Education, Media Services, 504 Services, Leadership Development, and Quality and Alternative Education. He joined Human Resources, and the Board promoted Mr. Stacy to his current role in January 2017. Often, the very first face you see when you visit Central Services when you arrive every day is Ms. Thompson, who works half of each day at the front desk and the other half at Human Resources, and I can honestly say, I've never seen her without a smile. She first joined the district 22 years ago as an instructional assistant at Red Bank Elementary before moving to White Knoll High as Discipline Secretary and Guidance Secretary. She is actually a charter member of Lexington District 1 Educational Office Professionals, as well as a member of the South Carolina Association of Educational Office Professionals. Congratulations to both of you. Next, we recognize a group of educators who went the extra mile to grow as learners by earning their National Geographic Educator Certification. They include Gilbert High's Jennifer Rozenski, Lake Murray Elementary's Blair Wells, Pelearan Elementary's Lauren McElwain. Elementary's Lauren McElveen, Red Bank Elementary's Brittany McGargle, River Bluff High's Garrison Hilton, Amy Price, and Chris Winkler, White Nile Elementary's Ryan Kingsland, and White Nile High's Courtney Bass, Deirdre Pukel, and Allison Westmoreland. National Geographic offers professional development free to educators committed to inspiring the next generation of explorers, conservationists, and changemakers. The program helps them generate classroom activities centered around real-world problems on a local, regional, and global scale. Participants, participants complete an in-person or online workshop, develop activities that apply the skills gained in Phase One, and finish with a capstone project that demonstrates professional growth. Let's congratulate these winners. Two of our school counselors recently received a grant to purchase a much-needed item for Gilbert Primary School. Would Mackenzie Hall and Amber McMillan come forward? These ladies won a $500 mini-grant from the Palmetto State School Counselor Association. They plan to use the funds to purchase, purchase calm-down kits for classrooms. With sensory-friendly toys and other items, the kits provide students an outlet and a way to redirect in the midst of a stressful moment. Thank you for seeking out this funding to benefit our students. Students at Peleon High will enjoy access to new opportunities next year thanks to instructional coach Ashton Pageant. Ms. Pageant won a grant from Ross Stores. As part of the Ross Stores Foundation's store-based giving program, she received $500 in gift cards. She plans to use the funding to provide enrichment opportunities for students in need. We know this will make them feel prepared to take on any challenge. Thank you for finding this opportunity for our students. Is Ashton here? Our final recognition tonight takes us to the music room. Eight of our band programs received the state's highest award after a superior year of performances. The South Carolina Band Directors Association gives the Outstanding Performance Award to the state's top musical groups. Winning band directors here with us tonight include Gilbert High's Hunter White, Gilbert Mittles, Matthew Boyto, Lexington High's Aaron Gant, Lexington Mittles, Craig Davis, Meadow Glen Mittles, Melanie Nguyen, Peleon High's Otto Haga, Pleasant Hill Mittles, Ashley Gable, and River Bluff High's Ken Turner. Bands accumulated points at marching band championships, concert performance assessments, and solo festivals. Those with the qualifying number of points received the Outstanding Performance Award, commending students, musicians, and band directors for their hard work. A few of their band highlights from this year include Peleon High's Marching Pride finishing second in the state, as well as Lexington, Meadow Glen, and Pleasant Hill Middle School bands receiving a superior rating in the Concert Performance Assessment. Congratulations to each of these talented groups. Thank you for taking the time tonight to help us recognize the many honors and achievements of our students and staff, and the generous contributions of our local businesses and communities. We love to share our good news. Honoraries, when you leave the meeting, remember to head to your left and into the lobby, where a member of the Communications Office will help you find your certificate. Now, just as I promised, you are welcome to stay, but you are more than welcome to scoot out and enjoy your summer, so have a good one. Thank you. Okay, let's keep moving. We're now to 13.0, which is citizens' participation. I do have one person that wants to speak. Would anybody else like to speak with the board? Because we have cards, if anybody else wants to. Okay, we need a card right here, please. This young man with the plaid shirt on? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start reading the instructions, if you don't mind. I'm sorry. Oh. I didn't even notice they weren't here. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and start reading the instructions while he's filling the card out, so. The Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees provides a time for citizens' participation at each regular board meeting. There are a few guidelines. First, in order to speak, you must be a parent or legal guardian of a student in Lexington County School District One, or a resident and taxpayer of the district. Second, each speaker has three minutes. Third, you may comment on an agenda item, school operations, programs, policies, or other matters of concern. However, you may not speak about specific individuals, whether students or staff. There are other ways to bring those particular situations to the board's attention. We want to give everyone who came here tonight a chance to speak. For that reason, board members will not reply to an individual's remarks. And if someone makes the point or points you came to make before you, if you could just state that you agree with the previous speakers and not restate every point, that would also help us. We also ask that you not clap or make any comments, either while an individual is speaking or after a speaker finishes. That slows our process down. If you want to speak tonight, we ask you to fill out a card that gives us your name and address for our records. Those cards are at the sign-in table. Is there anyone else who wants a card? Okay. Let me see where I am, sorry about that. If you have not filled out a card and still want to speak, hold up your hand. Anybody else? Okay, we're ready to get started. We'll wait for his card. Okay. We'll start with Ms. Sherry Rish. She is going to talk about several topics. She lives at 372 Bama Road in Gilbert, and she has children in the Gilbert Middle and the Gilbert Elementary School. Ms. Rish?
How are y'all?
We're good, thank you.
Good. I just have a few things to ask and some points to make. I was looking back through the board minutes and noticed that you, Ms. Smith, recused yourself from voting on some architects and builder, and a builder, just a few months ago. I looked back as far as I could, years back, and didn't see where you had done so before. As a board member of almost 20 years, just wondering why now that you had done so. With regards to the May 21st meeting and the footage posted to the district's YouTube page, I happened to notice that the camera was switched from my face to behind me right when Mr. Steve Baker decided to make his unbecoming comments and laughter. I looked through several other meetings, and I didn't see where that was a common practice. So why now, right before his unbecoming behavior? He's a town council member. If that's the way he behaves to somebody that he doesn't know whether or not he's a, I'm a constituent of his or not, I think it should be face-to-face like everybody else was. So it looks, it looks like the district chose to cut to a different angle, so his behavior couldn't be seen or heard. Also, touching on the Lexington Middle, moving of the Lexington Middle, to move that school out of heavy-traffic central, move it into heavy-traffic central, just so we can use those buildings for schools, be it, be it alternative and college, will essentially not affect traffic at all, so what's the point, other than to cost me money? And everybody else money? Especially without consulting County Councilmember Darrell Hudson's, without considering his, his prior ordinance, what, two months earlier, to slow the growth in his area? It almost looks vindictive when his area is slapping the middle of the town, where clearly that's not the agenda that the town would, would, would say that they are going with, is slowing the growth. I'd have to say that that's a disrespectful slap in the face to County Councilman and his constituents. It's absurd. You could build a whole new school behind Lexington Middle School. There's no reason to do it. The June 4th meeting. How is it legal to change the agenda a few hours before a meeting? Not once, but several times, according to the district website. Shouldn't the public be given 24 hours' notice of agenda changes, especially regarding the time of the meeting? When I got here at 6:30 that night, the meeting was over and everybody was walking outside. I don't, I was under the impression that the law was that the public was entitled to 24 hours' notice. Wouldn't that constitute an illegal meeting? Okay, so the legal fees and the FOIA request. Why would you redact district employee and/or board member names from the documents? Even if they're requested as a private citizen, that's info that has no reason to be redacted. Also, why would there be anything within the bond referendum construction that would need to be redacted? As I'm sure all of these unnecessary redactions added to the absurd amount of money that the district charged Ms. Garrison for those FOIA requests. So, those are just some of the concerns. I figured my three minutes would run out long before I got to the rest of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rish. Okay, now we'll move to, is it Colter or Colton? Carter. Carter, woo, sorry about that. Carter. No, it's okay. Is it Carter Hughes? Hawks, okay. Carter Hawks. He lives on Peach Festival Road in Gilbert, and he is a student at Gilbert High, so come on up, Carter.
This thing is on. I've got a lot of questions from, but like, I'm more worried about my teachers. They're getting paid about $40,000 a year, give or take, but when some people are making hundred thousand dollars, and some teachers have to pay for their own supplies. When some of those teachers have bad, well, bad-behaved students and do not get paid nearly enough for that kind of stuff, and I know some teachers enjoy teaching, and I love most of my teacher, I love all my teachers, I thank every one of them for what they do, but I still don't think it's right for, they don't get paid enough. And I would also like to see some more real-life classes, like how to do taxes, or how to start your own business in high school. Because when you go to college, you have to pay for those classes.
Okay. Anything else, Carter?
That's about it, thank you.
That's great. Thank you for your feedback, we appreciate it. Okay, anyone else that would like to address the board? Okay, we'll move on. We are now going to go to action items. Then tonight, it was our third reading of the 2019-2020 General Fund Budget that, if you were here earlier, Mr. Butler presented for the last time. Mr. Butler, so, board members, you have heard the presentation of the third reading of the budget during the public hearing. Let's get a motion and a second on the floor, and then we'll open it up for questions and comments, and then we'll vote. So, do I have a motion regarding the 2019-2020 General Fund Budget?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the third reading of the General Fund Budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 as recommended by the administration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, now, let's open it up for questions or comments. Board, are there any questions or comments before we vote?
I have some questions. Carter just mentioned that we have some employees making over $100,000 a year while other teachers make $40,000. Are there any board members that know the specific salaries that we're paying our top-paid employees? Do y'all have those figures?
Yeah, we've had them before. All you have to do is request them.
I'm asking, do you have them tonight, before you take a vote?
They're also available on the web, any state employee that makes over $50,000 that is.
Right, I have plenty of, I'm saying, tonight, before y'all take a vote, would you know to the penny how much you're paying your top-paid employees?
Ms. Garrison, may I ask what your line of questioning concerns? What are you driving at? What is your point?
I'm saying, since you're voting on a budget, do you have all of the details in that budget?
I don't have all of the details in it, do you?
No, I don't have the details. That's, that's the problem. That's why I'm asking.
It's online. It's online.
That information's not online. It may be online for last fiscal year, but not what we're voting on right now.
Okay.
It's okay.
Anything else, Ms. Anderson? I mean, Ms. Garrison?
Yes. I would just like to say that, um, six weeks ago, I requested a detailed budget for each department in Central Services, and also salary info for every department in Central Services, and I have yet to receive that information. And based on that.
Wait, I am a little confused on that. I thought you just wanted a sample. I don't think you, did you request for each? If I remember, I saw it, and you said, can you give me an example?
My email said, can I get the detailed budget for each department in Central Services, like the one you provided for the Communications Department? Could you also provide the proposed salary budget for each department in Central Services, and a copy of one elementary school's proposed budget? So that email was never responded to.
I don't think I got it. Did you send it to me?
No, I sent it to Dr. Little and Mr. Butler.
It would be helpful if you would copy me on it, so I can follow up on those. Okay, anything else?
Basically, for me, the budget lacks transparency. As I noted, when we were reviewing the budget, there's $300,000 in there that we can't account for. Also, the memorandum of understanding, the budget could change based on that information, but we don't have a meeting until tomorrow, so those are just some points I wanted to make before taking a vote.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Garrison? Okay, anything else, board members?
If I may, going back and looking, the reduction that you mentioned in utilities maintenance, in order to balance a budget, we actually went back to each location and reduced the amount of maintenance that we had budgeted in those areas. reduced the amount of maintenance that we had budgeted in those areas, so that accounted for that reduction.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Any other questions or comments, board? Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor regarding the 2019-2020 general fund budget. All in favor of the general fund budget as proposed by the senior staff and by our finance department, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Jada.
I'm sorry?
Jada's opposed.
Okay. So we have six in favor and one opposed, and the motion carries. Okay, we now have a third reading of the 2020-2021 academic school calendar, and this is for Dr. Tally. Do I, let's get a motion on the floor, and we'll discuss this as well. Do I hear a motion to approve the 2020-2021 academic school calendar?
Madam Chair, the 2020-2021 academic school calendar is attached for the third reading. I move that the board approve the 2020-2021 academic school calendar as proposed.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Okay, let's open the floor up for comments or discussion. Are there any comments or discussion, board?
I would just like to make a comment. This is the first time that we're doing four weather makeup days, and it's kind of a trial run with this idea, four weather makeup days. We've been asked many times over the last three or four years since we've had a fall weather event, while we didn't have a weather makeup day in the fall. We already have a calendar that, where the fall is squished and the spring has more time, but Dr. Tally and her calendar committee really worked hard to find a way to at least try this idea of a fall weather makeup day, and so I'm looking forward to kind of see, you know, if it benefits us. You know, an AP student, an extra day at the, you know, beginning of May doesn't help them as much as a day earlier on, so I'm eager to see how this calendar works for our students and our staff.
And thank you, Dr. Tally, for taking that back to the calendar committee and, you know, seeking feedback. Sure, it's my pleasure. Because it's, it is nice to try something new and see if it's, because the weather does something new every day. Certainly does. Okay. Any other questions or comments, board? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the 2020-2021 academic school calendar is presented by Dr. Tally and the calendar committee, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and it is unanimous. This time, we'll have the second reading for policy BE board meetings, and let's get a motion and a second on the floor, and then we'll open it up for discussion from Ms. Hill. Do I hear a motion to approve policy BE board meetings as presented? Thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Okay, let's open it up for discussion. Ms. Hill, you want to walk us through this policy?
So you received the first reading last month, and the primary change in the beginning with first reading was that we were going from 7:30 start times on board meetings to the 7:00 p.m. board meeting timeframe. Since then, before this reading, we've had the suggestion that in the annual meeting paragraph that you see in front of you, that we remove the language "annual" because the board does not have organizational meetings every year, because we don't have elections every year. So we have elections every two years, unless there's a special circumstance. So we're removing, the suggestion is to remove the word "annual" and to remove "November" because the November thing could not exist in a special election scenario, or it might not exist if the certification takes longer. So, and then we added "and certification" because not only does a board member have to be elected, but the South Carolina Election Commission has to certify that election too, which normally takes seven to 10 days afterwards. So those are the further recommendations for changes, only to that one paragraph under the defined annual meeting.
Board members, are there any questions or comments regarding any of those changes?
Ms. Hill, I'm still learning my, my mapping, if you will, when it, when it comes to, to district policies. And we have our board policies, and the table of contents has policy BE as school board records. Is this?
Okay, so this is, here's what's happening, and that's a very good question. So we are under, we have a mixed scenario in our board policies right now. Some of them are named and called policy names that are not recognized nationally, but the nation, in the nation, school boards are trying to all get to the same place, so that, let's say you are raising your child in South Carolina, and you moved to California, then policy BE board meetings would be the same, no matter what state you were in, or no matter what district. And so that's what we're currently working on, and that's why we keep plugging through each section, so we keep, so next time, we'll go further down the B policies and bring you some more, until they're all recodified, and once that happens, all those old conflicts and table contents will go away. Like, that happened in the A section already, and we're getting closer now to ending the B section.
Okay, so we should basically disregard?
Yes, I would ignore the table of contents right now.
Okay, all right, that, that makes sense.
And they're taking them off as, as we go through, for instance, sometimes when we approved BE the first time a year ago, it took seven policies away, because we had policies that only had one paragraph or one line in them, and so as we go in line with the South Carolina School Board Association and the National School Board Association's recodification process, it's much more streamlined, a better system for y'all, much more effective.
And so the, the most up-to-date information would be found, website?
They're putting it on the website, and so the best.
Our website, or?
Actually, our website is linking directly to the school boards associations, and they actually host all our policies, as well as most districts in South Carolina.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Hill, going back to the additional changes to the annual meeting paragraph?
Right.
That aren't in the draft that we have in our packet. Could you just read to me what the new first sentence would be on that paragraph?
So the annual meeting paragraph would now read, "The board holds its organizational meeting at the first regularly scheduled meeting following the election and certification of new board members. The board elects officers and swears in those officers at the meeting."
Thank you, just want to make sure I had.
So is that a replacement of the, the, the old codification?
We had already recodified this policy, so it has the correct name and the correct lettering, but there's still language that has shifted, primarily the fact that the board wanted to change a start time from 7:30 to 7:00 p.m. And then when we were looking at closer, we realized we still had language that indicated that we would hold, every board doesn't hold elections on the same timeframe. So our board holds elections every two years, because you have a four-year term, and half roll, basically half roll off every two years. And so ours is a two-year cycle, and so that annual reference didn't apply to the district.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I have a question as well. There are other policies, just say there's an annual meeting policy that still has the same language in it. When will we revise those?
So some of those go away as we work through these, and so you'll see them just drop off as we make changes. Do you know what number that was exactly?
No, I just remember looking it up.
Okay. You'll, we're getting really close to the end of Bs, the whole B recodification, so it, it will kind of all make sense pretty soon when we finish that, and at that time, the school board session will place the entire table contents for that section, and only the good ones will be there.
Okay, thank you.
I think we need to make one more change. Maybe I'm crazy, but I don't remember that we've ever sworn our officers in. We just elect them. So I'm thinking we need to do the "board elects officers," put a period, and then just delete the rest of that sentence. What do y'all think?
Agreed, we swear new board members in.
But we don't swear in officers.
Yes, correct.
Is everybody okay with that?
So, let me say it back to you.
Yeah.
So what I hear you want to change is the "board elects officers and swears in those officers at the meeting." You want to change it to the "board elects officers."
Period.
And I guess as a part of that, is there, is there a separate policy for continuation of leadership? So if the, you know, for example, say November comes, the election committee has not certified results, three board members rotate off who were chair, vice chair, secretary.
Which is what happened basically this year.
Yeah, so is, is there a separate policy for that, or is that embedded within this code BE?
So there is not a separate policy that addresses exactly what you're asking. It does function under this policy. What happens in many cases is it's not the entire, for instance, the last election's an example, the board chair decided not to run again and rolled off, in which case, until the, everybody was certified and we could come in and start a meeting and elect new officers, the vice chair fills in, just as the vice chair would fill in any time that the board chair was out sick or unable to fulfill their duties.
But I'm saying, what if all three?
If that happens, that would be a conundrum, and we would probably have someone step up, you know, there would have to be some temporary solution for that timeframe. We would hope that all three wouldn't, that should the chair and the vice chair not be able to do it, the next, the secretary would be able to fulfill the obligation until then.
Okay.
For instance, Ms. Green filled in last month for the position of vice secretary. You helped, she's vice chair, but she helped because Dr. Powers couldn't either as secretary. So.
Okay.
So I'm hopeful all three would not leave at one time.
I was, I thought I had read a policy, and I don't remember if it was South Carolina School Board, where the superintendent serves as an ex officio.
He, so when we do elections.
In a case like that, would, would preside over the meeting?
It could.
To then, I guess, do a temporary election.
If we had a scenario like that, that could happen, because when we do elect officers, that day, the superintendent does open the meeting, and the superintendent serves as the board chair until the first office is elected, until a new board chair is elected.
Gotcha.
Well, and Dr. Gaitan, and this is, I'm not trying to throw a wrench into this, because I think this policy update is appropriate to do now, but I've been tossing around the idea, because of that, of what happened this year, and the potential for a situation like that, and also, the last two elections we've had, three new board members have come in into an election, the next, their first meeting, and that's a little bit difficult for brand-new board members to vote on officers for which they're not familiar. Is possibly in the future, changing our policies so that our officer elections take place on an odd year, so that it's in between voting elections, so that we will have served together for a year before, and elect officers, but then you'd run into the dilemma that your officer, your chair loses reelection. But that, you would cover that in the policy, but I think there might be, it's just a little awkward to vote for an officer when you're brand-new on the board.
Sure, sure.
And I think you probably experienced that as well. But that, that's something that we can kind of examine and research for a future possible change.
But that's not within the purview of this, for what you're seeking approval for tonight.
Not, not tonight. Now, know this, that these are, policies are constantly reflected of the state law, and so, for instance, Mr. Caldwell's bringing in some policies that have to be passed before August 1st, according to state law, although we just got the models and we just got the information. So after the August school board session meeting, we'll receive a legislative update that tells us all the other laws that were passed during this last legislative session, and how they affect our current policies. So we could have passed this policy today and find that in August, we have to bring something back again, so it's a constant change.
We're out of, we're out of wrenches. We, we, we can't take any more wrenches being thrown at the end here. Duly noted, though. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, now, I need to figure out if we need to make an amendment. Do we need to amend it, or what you, I think we do.
I think it would be a good suggestion that if you would have a motion to make the changes that you recommended.
So you originally were given this update with just the time change down in the bottom of regular board meeting, and then tonight, we've had some input from board members reflecting some changes, so, Ms. Hill, will you read those changes once more?
I will. So the original change that we reflected from, in first reading, was that the board meeting scheduled time would go from 7:30 to 7:00 p.m. In this meeting, in between the first and second reading, and with additional input at this meeting, the recommendation is that the annual meeting paragraph read like this. "The board holds its organizational meeting at its first regularly."
First of all, I think we need to change it from annual meeting.
I did take annual out.
Out of the heading?
Oh, out of the heading. No, I didn't.
I know, I just realized that.
I would rename that organizational meeting, maybe?
That would be good.
Thank you. Y'all are testing my editing skills. Organizational meeting. "The board holds its organizational meeting at its first regularly scheduled meeting following the election and certification of new board members. The board elects officers." You might want to leave.
That's a little weird.
I would suggest that you leave that "the board elects officers" at that meeting.
Or at the organizational meeting.
Yeah, at the organizational meeting, I like that. Okay. So now let's reread it one more time, since we made some more changes.
All right, hang on one second. Okay. Organizational meeting. "The board holds its organizational meeting at its first regularly scheduled meeting following the election and certification of new board members. The board elects officers at the organizational meeting."
Okay. So we have now amended policy BE, so we need to have a motion on the floor to accept the amendments. Do I have a motion to amend policy BE to reflect the changes suggested in the organizational meeting paragraph?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the amendments to policy BE as just reflected.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments regarding the amendment? Okay, hearing none. We'll take a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amended changes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the amendment carries. We now have a motion and a second on the floor for the original BE without the amendment, so let's, we need to close that out and vote no, and then we need to reopen it with the amendment. So, all in favor of policy BE as originally presented with just the time change, and I believe, let's see, that was presented by Ms. Green and Dr. Powers. All those in favor, please say.
I'm sorry, can we just withdraw the motion?
Yeah, let's do that, that would be good.
That would be easier and less confusing.
Yes, let's withdraw the motion. So now, do I have a new motion? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy BE board meetings as amended.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Dr. Powers. So board, you are now voting on policy BE with an amendment. All those in favor of policy BE as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Okay, thank you for working through that. Okay, now, 14.4 is student travel request. Do I hear a motion to approve, how many travel requests?
Six.
Six travel requests. As, do I have a motion to approve the six travel requests?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve six student travel requests as presented.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Are there any questions or comments? Dr. Tally, anything you want to say about those six trips?
Just that they're nice trips. Two of them are international trips, and we're delighted that our students are citizens of the world and get to have those experiences. So I appreciate your approval of those.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. All those in favor of the six student travel requests, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. We are now going to 14.5, which is a procurement delegation for ratification of procurements, and this is presented by Mr. Butler. Board members, do I hear a motion to authorize procurement delegation for ratification of procurements as requested?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the administration's request to delegate the unauthorized procurement ratification. to delegate the unauthorized procurement ratification delegation to the chief operations officer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, now, let's, Mr. Butler, you want to comment on that, and then we'll vote?
Yeah, that normally falls under the purview of the district's procurement officer. And since I'll be retiring and Mr. Salters will be taking over, what I oversee is, and including the district's procurement officer, it just makes sense to make him the person in charge of, as one of those dudes to ratify unauthorized procurements.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. Salters, do you agree to that? Will you accept the challenge? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions or comments, board, before we vote on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Butler, so were you saying that you currently do this, or the procurement officer currently holds?
Yes, I, I, I am the district's procurement officer.
Okay.
And I do ratify those unauthorized.
Okay, I just know, we have a couple, like a director of procurement, and then.
Right.
Okay, a director of bids and procurement.
Right. But as far as the district procurement officer, that would be me.
Okay.
For two more days.
How often does, how often does this happen? Is this a once a year, or 10 times a year kind of thing?
I think it's once every 32 years.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about the actual unauthorized.
Like, when was the last time an act needed ratifying?
I mean, they happen throughout the year. Districts will do certain things that are outside the guidelines of procurement. So they are giving an unauthorized procurement letter, letting them know what they did wrong, and requesting from them what steps they take in order to cure that in the future. So then I would review those and say, okay, that makes sense. It may have been a new secretary who didn't know the procurement rules. So I said, now we've, we've gone over and we made sure she knows the rules. So then I just sign off and ratify it.
One of personal privilege, I just had a new person, if I could say that, do that. She was new, and she just made one mistake. And it's a form you get. I get it, and I send it on to her. She has to write what we did wrong, have to confess what we did wrong, and how we're going to remedy it, just like John said. So it happens more than you'd think.
And is that, so if it's, say, a contractual matter, can the contract be nullified? If, if you as the, as the unauthorized delegate, could you nullify the contract?
It would depend on what, what the issue was. Because sometimes it may be that we receive it after the fact. But yeah, if it was a contract and it wasn't done properly, yes, we could nullify the contract.
And the vendors are aware that, that the contract is, could be, if they're talking to the wrong person, could be nullified.
Yes, because it's up to them to realize who is eligible to sign that contract. So if they had a bookkeeper or even a principal sign the contract, it's not binding. And that's up, by law, that's up to them to know that that's the case.
Gotcha. And are there, are there kind of formal presentations that come back to the board to say these were the number of unauthorized?
Not.
I can't even come up with the words on this, unauthorized.
Procurements.
Procurement ratification. Sorry about that.
Yeah, currently there is not. It's basically monitored, and as long as it's not, you know, repeated and repeated and repeated, normally it's very, makes a lot of sense to say, okay, person was new, they didn't realize. Now they know, we'll move on.
Gotcha, gotcha.
That's something I'd be interested in seeing. A report, some kind of report that just gives you some kind of summary.
Okay. I'll notify Mr. Salters.
There you go.
Guessing you can't come up with that in two days.
I mean, not past, I'm just saying, going from this point forward.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments, board? Okay, hearing done, we'll take a vote. All in favor of naming Mr. Salters the officer in charge of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. 14.6 is the minority business enterprise approval. Let's go ahead and get a motion and a second on the floor, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board of trustees approve the 2019-2020 Minority Business Plan as presented.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Guyton. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. Powers. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Butler, you want to say anything about that?
As you're aware, it's, it's basically the same plan that we've had intact for years. The only two changes being, we, obviously we changed the year from 1819 to 1920. And then the other, other change would be to change it from me being the procurement officer to the chief operations officer, Mr. Salters, becoming the district's procurement officer. But other than that, everything's still the same.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Are there any questions or comments, board?
Yes, on the last page, the MBE goals. Just from attending previous board meetings, I've noticed that over the last couple of years, we haven't met that goal. Do you know when the last time was that we met our goal?
I don't remember the exact year. It may have been two or three years ago, I'm not sure. But there's different reasons for that. To be a minority business, you have to be registered with the state. The state has certain requirements in order to be a minority business. You can't just say, well, I'm a minority business, so I'm a minority business. There's a lot of paperwork that has to be filled out, and some companies, I think, have come to the conclusion it's just not worth the hassle of going through to be named a minority business. So there's been a reduction in the statewide number of minority businesses, which has made it harder to, to reach that goal. I could find out the, the last year, but that'd be easy to find out that we met that goal. But if I had to guess, it's probably, probably maybe three years ago.
I'm just curious, who requires us to set a goal? Is this a state law, or is this district policy?
It's, it's a, it's a state requirement. And it's mainly for state agencies, although we do fall under that realm also. And, and the state may have a different repercussions as far as if you don't meet that goal from what the district does. So the district kind of sets their own parameters, etc. If you don't meet the goal, what are you going to do? Where the state more mandates the, the state procurement office, they pretty much mandate what you have to do, whether that's sometime an improvement plan, or whatever it might be. I'm not sure of the exact requirements. So it is mandated by the state, but how it's enforced is up to the district.
And how do we enforce that?
Basically, we give a report to the board, nullifying the results each year of whether we met the goal or not. Until just a few years ago, we pretty much met it every year, so it wasn't an issue. It's only been the last couple of years where we've fallen a little bit short in meeting that goal. But so far, nothing's, you know, been done, or suggested to be done, for not meeting that goal.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Butler, the issue about meeting the goal is not that, you know, we aren't accepting contracts. The issue is that we haven't had certified contractors step forward and make bids for business. I mean, that's the struggle.
Well, you know, and I guess technically, if you want to blame somebody, you can blame me. Because I've always looked at it like, we're not going to pay more just because you're a minority business. We're going to take the best deal for the taxpayers' money, and we're going to go with them. The state actually sometimes will do, do that. They'll actually pay more in order to try to meet their goal. We took the stance, we're not going to do that. So we just felt like it was a waste of taxpayers' money.
Any other questions, board, comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the minority business enterprise approval, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. At this time, 15.0 is superintendent's report. And board, this is for, the rest of the agenda is for information only. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Little. Dr. Little?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. If Mr. Smith would go and make his way forward, just to let you know, we wanted to get an update on White Nile Middle School. White Nile Middle School was named a priority school this year. And we wanted to have Mr. Smith come and talk about what they've been working on and about what their plan is moving forward. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Little. I want to also thank Dr. Tally and Ms. Hill. They contributed to this and gave some input. I appreciate that. And members of the board, on behalf of everybody at White Nile Middle School, appreciate the opportunity to share some of what we're doing. And we realize that you guys support, and resources make possible the work that we are doing. Want to start out talking a little bit about challenges and opportunities, and purposely name this slide that way, because I think it's tremendously important that we look at, at these things in that way, that these do present some challenges for us, but it also provides some, some super opportunities for us going forward. We recognize, and our data shows us, that we have some achievement gaps that we can continue to need to address. We particularly see these gaps among our students of poverty, our minority students, and our male students, particularly in the area of language arts. And it was interesting, just this morning, in a training we were involved in, some of these cut across the district as well. So these are not peculiar to us necessarily. We also, as a school and community in White Nile Middle, we continue to see a rising poverty index. Last measure, approximately 61%. And it's, of course, critical that we continue to work with our students and families of poverty. We also have a growing ESOL population. Currently, just looked at numbers this morning, last year, we ended the year with 84 students who were identified as English language learners. And currently, as we rolled over in Power School, we have 81, I think, for next year. That's a 40% increase from 2017, 18, to 2018, 19. And staying, looks like it's staying about steady going forward. That, of course, those learners makes up about 10% of our population. We're, we're right at 800, a little over right now. They certainly bring some challenges with them, but they also bring tremendous work ethic, and also some tremendous opportunities they bring with us in our population. Overall, we continue to have a growing, more diverse student population, and that kind of cuts across a lot of things, economically, racially, and ethnically. And again, that presents us some, some great opportunities as we embrace and celebrate that diversity going forward. Our student population is also continuing to show some transience. Last year, well over 150 students enrolled at White Nile Middle after the year began. And a little less than that exited us during the year. So that's a lot, a lot of comings and goings. We know, and matter of fact, that's identified as one of our risk factors throughout the district. We know that brings certain challenges for those students, obviously, and also for our staff as they try to integrate those folks into our culture and into our instruction. We also looked hard at our current schedule, and this happened across the district at the middle school level. Like most of our middle schools, in the past, we have had a schedule that allocated approximately 45, excuse me, 55 minutes for our core classes of language arts, math, science, and social studies. And also, our students taught, excuse me, our teachers were teaching five classes a day. So generally, a core teacher would be dealing with upwards of 125 or so students during the day and trying to get, get things done in 55 minutes. So those are some of the things that we looked at as we began to try to address some of what was going on. We're right at, we finished the year at, I think, 8:10. We're projecting about 8:30 for next year. So we are beginning to see some more growth again in the White Nile area as well. We've had a few new neighborhoods come in and that sort of thing. So we're, we're starting to see some more growth. Want to talk about some steps that were taken last year, what's happening this summer, and what our plan is for next year going forward. And we thank you guys and senior leadership for recognizing some of our needs. Think I just died? Okay. But during the year, last year in January, we had four additional positions that were approved. An additional ESOL teacher, an ELA and math teacher, two positions. Those were intended as intervention positions and instructional coaching position. We worked to fill those, and we were able to fill two of those with what we thought were very strong candidates. Two we did not fill, because we just didn't have good candidates to put in place at the time. But we ended up with a very strong ESOL teacher and a strong additional math intervention teacher. Obviously, our most important interventions have to do with instruction. And so these things have been going on throughout the year and going forward. Our instructional coaching is focused on student engagement and the workshop model, and effective technology integration. And that's true across the district. We're very fortunate, we have a, an outstanding literacy coach, Dr. Lett. And we have also an outstanding digital integration coach, Ms. Brooks. Going forward, we also began last year to, to work on a push-in model of support for our response to intervention students, our RTI students. So we still did a little bit of pull-out to serve those kids, pulling them out of exploratory classes and scheduling them into RTI classes. But we worked hard to get a solid model of push-in. So our RTI teachers are going in and co-teaching with our core language arts and math teachers. And, and we feel that was successful. We'll be looking to, to see that that shows up in our results. Next year, going forward, we're also going to be pushing in more with our special education resource students and teachers, and our ESOL teachers as well. So we really feel that this provides a, a model in which those teachers are, are co-teaching. They can see what's going on with those students firsthand every day, and they can intervene directly as they see what, what those students need.
We saw that model when we were touring Carolina Springs Middle, didn't we? It was really impressive, because you could really see that they were helping the students that were kind of struggling, and the teacher could continue with the class, but the other teachers were kind of helping those kids stay caught up. So I thought it was a real impressive model.
Thank you. And it's a model that requires some coaching for our teachers, because we don't want those intervention teachers to be simply helpers or to get stuck in just doing particular things. We want them to truly be co-teachers, working hand in hand and knowing what's going on with those kids every day. As you know, we are a priority status school, and we received some funding for that. So I want to kind of update you on what has, has occurred with that since. With support from instruction and district leadership, we put together what we feel is a plan that really connects well with our school goals and with the district strategic plan. Had four main parts, to add a mathematics instructional coach, to enhance our ELA classroom libraries, to provide more quality professional learning for our math teachers, and to add summer enrichment. And kind of where those each are at this point, we have onboard a mathematics coach for next year. It's actually one of our teachers, Ms. Tiffany Schull. She was one of our district teacher of the year finalists a year ago. Outstanding instruction, outstanding procedures, and great with data. So we're excited about her working with our math teachers and coaching them up. We feel like that will kind of flesh out our coaching model with a literacy coach, a math coach, and a digital literacy coach. So we're excited about that. Our classroom libraries, we are in the process of spending that money and fleshing out those libraries. And we're particularly looking at titles that are of interest to males and minority students, since that showed up in our data as areas we needed to address. We have signed a contract for three lab site visits with the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics to work with our math teachers. And they'll get hands-on coaching and go directly into putting that into practice. And we are running this summer a summer enrichment camp. Every summer, we have students who need to go to summer school, or we have to consider for retention or promotion. What we did with this, this summer is going on right now. We took those students in our sixth and seventh grade, our rising seventh and eighth grade students, who would have generally gone to our district online summer school. generally gone to our district online summer school, which is a good thing, but we wanted to get them back in our building. We have four of our teachers who are working with this program. Those kids are coming for four days a week, a half a day for four weeks. And it was really interesting as we started this out, we started calling parents about this, and their first questions were things like, well, how much is this going to cost? And the answer was, no worries, we got it. And how about transportation? We were allowed, we were able to provide transportation. We're providing some supplies, and we're also doing a couple of educational field trips, one this Thursday. So parents were extremely excited, our teachers were excited. We kind of reminded ourselves, these 30 kids walking in the door Monday morning a week ago might not be quite as excited, but, and they weren't, they kind of drug in a little bit. But what's been really interesting is they have become excited about it, too. So it's become, we're kind of studying them a little bit because part of what we're looking at is why did these kids not have success? And so we're going to look at that hard, and our kids are, we're hoping to give them some tools to take away. We're doing some basic language arts, some basic math, study skills, and also team building. So we're excited to see what's going to happen with this.
Do you provide any meals for those classes?
We're also providing meals. We're working with the summer lunch program, which is actually, one of the programs is right next door at Whittenham Elementary. So we go down and get those meals, and so we're serving them lunch before they go home as well.
That works out well, to come do that side by side.
And is this rising seventh and eighth graders? Is that what you said?
That's correct. We decided to focus on them. We had, you know, limited numbers we could serve. Our rising ninth graders, we had them go ahead and do the regular summer school program to make sure they were prepared for Whittenham High School. Couple of shots of the kids involved in that. The two on the left, one of the things we did for summer reading, we had each child select two books from the summer reading list. We just got those in, and again, surprising, they were excited about getting books in their hands, so we hope they're at home reading right now.
Yeah, sounds good.
The other big change we've made going forward with support from senior leadership and the board is a new schedule. That required some additional FTE, as you all know, and we thank you for that. What we're doing with our schedule, and I'll show you the bell schedule in a minute, World Language is going to move to kind of a third exploratory track. Our core classes, our traditional core of language arts, math, science, and social studies, those classes will increase by about 10 minutes to about 65 minutes, give or take a minute. And that's a win. The other win is that core teachers with that schedule will now teach four classes a day instead of five. They're still going to be teaching basically the same amount of time during the day, but that will reduce the number of students they work with every day. And our exploratory and world language classes now will come about 45 minutes as opposed to 50. We will be using a push-in model for all three of our special support areas, special ed, RTI, and ESOL. And we also are continuing our advisor, advisee time, we call ours soaring, similar to some of the other schools' crew and whatnot, but ours is soaring since we're hawks.
Now, are we modeling this at some other schools, too? Or is it just, I know you talked about the time changes at some of our, is this, are we doing it at other schools?
Yeah, so the middle school schedule is changing at Beechwood Middle, at Whittenham Middle, at Pillion Middle, and partially at Gilbert Middle, perhaps Pleasant Hill Middle. I'm not sure if they landed on that or not, and I feel like I'm missing one that's changing. Is Lexington Middle also changing?
Yes.
Okay. So is that maybe most of them? Most if not all. In some form or fashion, there will be schedule changes to most of the schools.
Okay, thank you.
And our schedule very much mirrors Beechwood. We kind of worked together on some of that, I think they presented a while back. It's a little confusing. I primarily put this slide in for our human resources folks. They came and subbed for us on May 1st, so when they went and did an awesome job. So when they want to come back, there's a bell schedule for you guys. But you can see in here that the time's around 65 minutes or so for core, about 45 for exploratory and world language. Our grade-level teams will have some big chunks of time. Our exploratories back up to each other, so they'll have big chunks of time to plan, to have the meetings we need to do. And this will even allow us, from time to time, we need to bring in other folks like our directors to do some work with our ELA teachers, for instance, or whatever. So it gives us a big chunk of time that these guys can really dig in and get some work Obviously, there are some trade-offs. We acknowledge that. World Language time is being reduced, and exploratory classes will be slightly shorter in length as well. But students will continue to have multiple quality exploratory options in fine art, and almost all of our students will still be receiving world language instruction. The big wins, if you do the math, our students end up with about 30 additional hours in their core classes across the course of the year. 65 minutes, 65 as opposed to 55 may not sound like a lot, but that extra 10 minutes allows our folks to implement, we believe, with more fidelity, the workshop model and the models of instruction we're trying to get done. I've often been in classes in that last few minutes when you're kind of evaluating on whether there's good closure or whether they kind of have time for reflection, and you feel pretty bad not giving a teacher credit when they've really just run out of time. Our teachers have access to quality coaching in all three of those areas. We've got ample time for professional learning, and world language will remain an important part of our curriculum. We do feel all this connects to our system commitments, students advancing on time. Our summer program, we believe, is part of that, making sure we have supports in place for students through our push-in model is part of that. Power skills for all students, we're going to continue to work on that through our soaring time and our exploratory classes and across the curriculum. Family and community partnerships, again, it's been very interesting to see how our parents have responded to what we're doing with scheduling and particularly with our summer program. And through our coaching support, our math lab sites, and the time we have in place to work with our teachers, we believe we will be able to help every adult be equipped with what they need to take care of our kids. So we're excited about the opportunity to do something a little different with our schedule, and we believe it is a big win for our kids.
Questions, Board, from Mr. Smith? I'd like to ask Dr. Little and Mr. Smith if we could schedule you to come back in the late fall and kind of give us an update on how all this is transpiring and what your, I'd like, you know, to hear what your teachers think, how they, if they think it's helped them, because this, some of these are pretty big changes. So thank you for doing all that.
I'll report this as well.
Oh, that's great, yeah. So we'll get to see it in person. Okay. Anything else, Board? Questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Dr. Little?
All right. We have also another great presentation tonight from two of our fine folks, Dr. Erica Bissell and Hillary Morgan, who are, they're going to discuss transformative professional learning that shifts instructional practice. I know we're excited about that at 9:20 at night. We're ready to go.
And I won't say I'm getting signals from my colleagues to not belabor the point, but we'll, we'll get to it. We want to give you a really good overview, and it's actually a great follow-up to what Mr. Smith just shared because I think a lot of what Ms. Morgan and I are going to talk about tonight is having a direct impact on teaching and learning, and some of the changes that Whittenham has put into place is going to allow us to have more access to teachers to really help shift those, the instructional practice. So we actually just shared this presentation at SCASA a week ago. It was very well received, and we call it show, don't tell. And the reason for that is we really have been studying professional learning and what works and what doesn't. And we've come to the conclusion, and through a lot of feedback and reflection, that we tell teachers to do a lot of things, but we don't ever show them how to do it and what it looks like in real practice with real children. And so we have several structures. We're going to go through them quickly. We'll be happy to expand if you wish, and we can always come back. And it might even be really healthy to have some teachers come talk about it because I think you would find that they are just over the moon about the opportunities that we provide here for them in Lexington School District One. So the first structure is model classrooms, and model classrooms are a way for teachers to lead from where they are. And so we believe, of course, in leadership at all levels, and teacher leadership is of the utmost importance. And so in a model classroom, it allows for teachers to showcase their instructional practice and have others come and see them kind of in the trenches with their kiddos and have a healthy dialogue between practitioners to ask questions rather than Ms. Morgan or myself or our coaches, again, telling teachers what this should look like. They go ahead and go see it in a real-life classroom. And so Ms. Morgan's going to talk about kind of the basics of a model classroom.
And so our model classrooms are classrooms in which other teachers can observe the visible implementation of our instructional model, which is the workshop model, and the student engagement model. Our model classroom teachers provide high-quality instruction for all students, and these classrooms serve as, provide continual learning for both the model classroom teachers as well as the observers through observation, feedback, reflection, and coaching. On the next slide, you have some pictures from our model classrooms. We have on the left and the top middle, small group instruction happening. On the top right, you have one-on-one conferencing, and at the bottom, you have a mini lesson.
And so just a few teacher testimonials. Again, I'll give you a moment just to read those, but the feedback from both model classroom teachers and visitors, which have included administrators and special education teachers and interventionists, so it's kind of run the gamut, even teaching assistants have gone on model classroom visits, and the feedback has been just remarkable. We were a little tentative about this because you can put model classroom teachers in a position where there may be some pushback in that there's some competition or a sense of jealousy that, why is this person chosen, not me? We have not seen any of that. It has been nothing but healthy conversation and dialogue, reflective practice, how did you get kids to do that? You know, oh my gosh, that's a great thing that I saw. I never thought about doing that, doing it that way. And so really, just this healthy, healthy interaction and dialogue. And we're looking for opportunities to build model classrooms into our teacher leadership growth opportunities so that other teachers who have a desire to add this to their leadership kind of resume will have the opportunity and know through a very transparent process how they can move into the model classroom role. And even thinking about some timeframes, maybe a model classroom teacher is a two-year stint, and then with the opportunity to either continue or decide, you know, there is a commitment here. You're opening your doors. You have to kind of be on your game each and every day, which our teachers come and do amazing things. But there's also a need for some downtime and for your kids to have a little bit of normalcy. Although the kids and the teachers say they're so excited to have extra teachers in the classroom. If you're a teacher at heart, you can't help but sit next to a child who's learning to read or learning to be a mathematician and coach them. So the teachers of model classrooms are saying, my kids are getting double the teaching because when teachers are in my room, they can't help but coach a student along. So it's been a, it's been a wonderful, wonderful thing. The process, again, we have a, we feel like we have a very, a really nice framework for how we get teachers scheduled for model classroom visits. We also require that it be very much like the POP cycle that is a part of our 4.0 evaluation system. Not to say this has anything to do with evaluation, but I say that to say, there's a pre-conference required before going to a model classroom so that you can set your goal of why you're going to visit rather than just going kind of willy-nilly. What is it that I really want to improve in my own practice that I'm going to go look for when I go to this model classroom? There's an observation tool that they complete while they're in the classroom, and then there's a post-conference where they reflect and set a personal, personal to them but professional goal on how to move their own practice forward. So that is also all done with, we call it an accompanying adult, either an administrator or a coach. So they have a thought partner who can then also remind them of the things that they saw, because when they're there, they're taking copious notes, and sometimes it's a lot to remember all of the wonderful and name the next step that you're going to take. And again, the part in here that's maybe not named so well, but it's been one of the most powerful parts, is we require a debrief after a model classroom visit between the visiting teacher and the model classroom teacher, and both teachers say that is the most powerful practice so that they can have, again, that healthy dialogue and ask questions and talk about how they make the moves that they make and why they make the moves that they make. And we just don't have enough time for that on a daily basis. You know, teachers are always asking for more collaboration time, so this is another opportunity for them to collaborate. The next structure is lab sites, and this is, Mr. Smith actually talked about this. And lab sites, the difference between a lab site and a model classroom, a model classroom is where, like Ms. Morgan said, it's visible implementation day in and day out. A lab site is really more like a teaching hospital. And think about it is in that I'm watching an expert practitioner model something, and then right there on the spot, I do the exact same practice with real children, and I get coached in my practice. So it's kind of like on the ground, and it's definitely something that pushes people outside of their comfort zone, but that's where the real learning happens. So again, I could tell teachers what a small group looks like, or I could say, here, watch me do a small group, and then you go do it with these three kids, and I'm going to talk you through it so that tomorrow you can go do it when I'm not there. So I'm going to remove myself as the scaffold, and you'll be prepared to then implement that structure the next day in your classroom. This, again, has been very well received, and we're doing lab sites and we have model classrooms. We didn't say K through 12, and we'll be adding pre-K, intervention, and special education model classrooms, and engaging in lab sites with those folks as well. So it's running the gamut. It is not just for general education teachers, it's not just for elementary. We're trying to impact all teachers with these show, don't tell structures.
I think we've observed this, too, on some of our school tours, and it's very impressive as well.
Yeah. And so again, lab sites provide authentic opportunities for teachers to observe, learn, observe, engage through guided practice, and then engage in meaningful dialogue. And so our next slide illustrates the sequence of professional learning in a lab site experience. So on your left, the study group with teachers. We have an expert leading a group around new learning, and in this case, these are some of our high school math teachers. They're learning about the use of questioning and rich mathematical tasks to increase student engagement and generate mathematical discourse in their classes. After that new learning, they move into their classrooms and watch the expert demonstrate this new learning with actual students, their students, and then they immediately turn and try those practices with a different group of students. We then leave the classroom, we debrief the experience, the teachers reflect on this experience and set personal goals to move their practice forward.
And again, the teacher testimonials have been very powerful, and the thing that Ms. Morgan said that's so important is it's with their own children. When you go to a conference, typically, if you see something that looks amazing, sometimes the takeaway is, well, oh, but it's those kids, or, well, those aren't my kids, or they should come try that in my setting. Here, we're having this done in our Lexington One schools. We have model classrooms and lab sites happening in all of our feeder systems. So everybody's represented, all of our students are participating, and all of our students can meet the expectations we set for them. And so this really puts an exclamation point on that sometimes we have consultants come who have never even met our students, and they have them questioning at high levels, they have them applying, you know, amazing reading skills without even the relationship that our teachers have the opportunity to build. So there, they come in, and they come in for multiple days, so they do build a relationship over time. But it's amazing when expectations are set for students, they will rise to the occasion. The next structure that we have put into place is of huge impact. We're using social media and trying to have a positive digital footprint by showcasing the good of all of the wonderful things that are happening in our classroom and providing forums for teachers to interact through social media. And so both Hillary and I have a hashtag that we use whenever we're tweeting or posting on Facebook, anything that we see that's wonderful in our math and literacy classrooms. We have Dr. Little Train to use the hashtag. We have Dr. Tally uses our hashtag. So what's nice about that common hashtag is that you can follow that strand. And so we can see if I, every night, I check, and I have a favorite of hashtag Lex One Literacy, and so I can, I automatically see all the wonderful things that were posted that day and can like them all and provide comments and feedback rather than having to search through the whole, my whole Twitter life to figure out where all the good of Lex One Literacy is happening. And then the Facebook page is a private Lex One Literacy Facebook page that does not open to the public. We have all of the appropriate settings per communications, but this is a place where teachers can communicate, they can post questions, and really, we encourage them to post pictures and videos because, again, the show, don't tell. I can tell you how I do it, but if I show you a picture of my classroom library or I show you a video of a small group, barring all appropriateness of student inclusion, that's what's really driving, oh, I can do that, too. Oh, that's the person down the hall for me. Oh, that's somebody I took a summer course with. I can reach out to that person. So building that network, that professional learning network, is really what we're going after with social media.
And so we also provide summer, summer, summer learning. And so we also provide summer, summer learning opportunities, which is our more traditional approach. However, we're very careful to plan these opportunities so that teachers are engaged as a learner. They kind of live the experiences that their students would in their classroom. We have two two-day math workshop institutes. I just concluded with a group of 30 teachers this afternoon, and I'll welcome 30 more in a few hours for another two days.
And then our homegrown writing institute is, this is something we've done three or maybe four years now. We have a four-day intensive where teachers actually live the part of student, and we have consultants come in and provide opportunities for them to learn and grow in their reading and writing instruction. But again, the key is that they're living the structures and living the practices and encountering some problems that their students are going to encounter so that they can then troubleshoot and problem-solve right then how they're going to deal when students encounter some of those predictable problems. All right. And then a few other twists on traditional professional learning. I'm not going to show you any videos, but the one on the left is what we call a clinic, a clinic opportunity. And the clinic opportunity allows teachers to send in questions ahead of time. And then these two lovely ladies, they're like Kathy and Hoda. They do like a talk show, and they say, oh, we have a question from so-and-so at Rocky Creek Elementary School about, you know, this phonics unit. Yes, and here's the answer to that question. So teachers are piped in live from their school. There's no traveling. It saves them on spending, you know, instead of 45 minutes at a professional learning after-school, this may only take 15 or 20. So we're trying to be conscientious in meeting them where they are and kind of taking away that, or allowing for that anytime, space, and place for professional learning to be happening, whether it be on social media. In fact, I just had to bow out of a Twitter chat that two of our coaches are hosting because I was here at the board meeting and didn't want to be rude. But we have, learning is going on all the time thanks to all of these shifts in professional learning structures. And then on the right side is what we call a fair. This happened to be a phonics fair where we allowed teachers to come together across the district and share what they're doing in a particular, on a particular topic, in this case, phonics, and learn and grow from each other. And again, showing, these are the tools that my kids have been responsive to. Showing, this is how I'm organizing my supplies and my materials. Showing, this is what my kids are able to produce rather than telling you, let's just, you know, you just need to do this because this is what we decided we were going to do.
We also hosted an elementary math make and take in May. We had about 50 teachers come out, and this was just a collaborative time for teachers to engage in meaningful discussion and make learning stations to be implemented in their classroom the next day.
And then on the right side, again, leveraging some technology, we sent these two coaches to a professional learning opportunity in Charlotte. And on their way home safely, they recorded a video of the top things that they learned, posted to Facebook, and it was available for everybody within hours of them leaving the conference or the session. Now, that is powerful. And at SCASA, we charged the participants in our session to do the very thing safely on their way home from SCASA. Because when you go to a conference, by the time you get on the plane or get on the road and you're ready and heading home, it's all gone. Or you get back and life happens, and everything that I thought I was going to do after going to the conference just never takes place. So we're calling those traveling tips, and it is just fun. It's different. It's, it's just keeping kind of like some flavor in professional learning and not just the very traditional sit and get, here's a book, let me tell you about, but more engaging, and teachers are loving it. And then our last structures are a little bit more traditional, but one thing that we are, we're really striving to do is to include teachers and as many professional learning opportunities as possible as presenter, as facilitator. Because again, as a coach, as a district coordinator, I can tell teachers how I think I, how I think it should go, what research says is best practice, but the boots on the ground, the teachers that are actually doing it day in and day out have the most powerful voice. And so we have encouraged, and I don't like to use required, but highly encourage coaches anytime they present that they need to have a teacher by their side who is the voice of the practitioner. And so the example on the left is a second-year teacher at Lexington Elementary who is a model classroom teacher in her second year and is absolutely phenomenal. She's also teaching summer camp with her coach alongside her, presenting at an after-school PD. And then...
We also hosted a blended book study we brought together. We, well, we leveraged Google Classroom to bring together 50 elementary math teachers to engage in a book study around our Math in Practice by Sue O'Connell, and she's an expert mathematician.
So that was Fast and Furious. You're welcome, Shane. And I always like to entertain a hard time. But we did, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. But we also encourage you to come on out. And if you want a list of, schedule of when lab sites are happening or where model classrooms are, we'd be happy to provide that because these are to-not-be-missed opportunities.
Board, any questions or comments? I think your enthusiasm is contagious, contagious. I can tell y'all really enjoy this, and it shows. So thank you so much. I loved it. That was a great presentation. We'll definitely be looking for it on our school tours, so. Okay, Dr. Little?
Nicely done, ladies. One of the things about this that I, that I do believe is transformative, that when you think about the innovative practice, it is that piece where you think, once you see the idea, you go, why haven't we been doing that for 50 years? But including students in that professional development piece has really been something that historically has never been done in professional learning experiences. And I love that not only are we including them, but we're surrounding our teachers with students during those learn, and really making them the center and the heart of that professional learning experience. So that's really nicely done. Thank you both very much. All right. It is my privilege and pleasure now to welcome Coach Bennett here with us tonight. We've been having lots of conversations over the last year about middle school athletics and things that we can do differently with middle school athletics. And Coach Bennett's going to talk to us about some things that we can look ahead and some things we can look forward to.
We might need to order some pizza.
All right.
Our athletics update, you see right here, this is our Pleasant Hill volleyball team, Mediglin Middle championship basketball team. And our keys to success, it starts with y'all. It starts with the board. We appreciate your time and all you do. You empower us to have great teachers and coaches for our kids. Our superintendent, who won SC AAA Superintendent of the Year last year. Our senior leadership team, who's helped improve our coaches, which we hadn't been given a raise since 1998. Our principals and ADs, faculty and staff, parent, community involvement, is y'all talk about, all the people that are invested in our children. As a matter of fact, I think Dr. Little hit a basket today, Young Fine, on Twitter. The first three-pointer ever at Beachwood Middle.
It only took me 10 tries. Only took me 10 tries.
Here's some things we're focused on. This is what we're discussing. And I traveled to Fort Mill last year and watched it. When you get enough numbers in your bigger, your larger middle schools, having a seventh and an eighth grade team, say in volleyball, in basketball, even in football, it's tough to cut kids because you don't know when a kid's young, what they're going to turn out to be. We're looking at intermurals. We're discussing that with the high school league, with sixth graders, middle school athletic conference, we're going to touch on in a second, participant and spectator safety. We had a meeting today on that. We met with the recreation department. We're going to meet again. We don't want to interfere with them. We want to have a great partnership with the recreation department. You can see their numbers here in Lexington, fall, winter. Look at the number in the spring when you got baseball and soccer. So we want to find times in there where they have a little bit of dead period, and we can do some, possibly some intermurals. But we want to have a great partnership with the high school league and our recreation department. There's some of our Warhawks right there.
Go Warhawks.
And we'll talk about them in a second. We're going to have, Dr. Little had a great idea. You know, he's, he says Carolina, he talks about the Tar Heels. We're still educating him a little bit by the Tigers and the Gamecocks down here in South Carolina. But he said, we're going to have eight middle schools. Why don't we do our own conference? Pillion playing volleyball, Gilbert playing B-team baseball. It's pretty cool out at Gilbert. They have a B-team. Don't have as many students as our big schools, but they still have a B-team. Pleasant Hill with basketball. See those numbers? If we had a seventh and an eighth grade team, we'll have double those numbers with our kids. New middle school conference. So when we had the meeting and I said, all right, Dr. Little's giving us the charge. Let's form our own conference. The old pack got upset. And then we had a young athletic director or assistant principal say, hey, why don't we get Sand Hills and Batesburg-Leesville Middle? And then come in and be with Pillion and Gilbert, and then we're going to take White Knoll Middle, which is our next smallest. We're going to have two divisions, five in the large, five in the small, but we're not going to call them that. We're going to call them the North and South. And we haven't settled on this logo yet. We got to get, probably y'all's approval on it. But you'll look at the teams right here, the middle schools that we have. Eight of them are ours. Mediglin Middle, going around the horn, Pleasant Hill, Lexington Middle. We'll talk about that one in a second. Gilbert Middle, Pillion Middle, White Knoll Middle, Beachwood, Carolina Springs, and the two we're bringing in, Sand Hills and Batesburg-Leesville. Five in the north, five in the south. We're going to have jamborees in volleyball, in basketball, in football. You know what's going to happen with this middle school conference? Less money spent on travel and larger gates, more money for the kids. So that's what we're real excited about, that we're going to have, we're going to have bigger gates and less money on travel. So we're real excited about that. The Lexington is what we're going to call it. We met today on this. This is two things we're talking about. Eighth grade and under accompanied by a parent or a guardian at a game, and just kids running wild. Also, the clear-bag policy, a lot of school districts are going to that.
I think Lexington Five just announced they're doing that.
They are. We talked today, what we're going to do is get our middle school principals together, our high school principals together, form committees and get their opinions because, you know, I tell our ADs all the time, Jamie Clark is interning. Jamie, if you'll wave to everybody. He's a Lexington One product, rising senior at Emory and Henry University, plays point guard, majoring in sports management, and he's been interning with us this summer. He's learned AD stands for all duties, all day, and after dark. I'm trying to get him to come and education, and I hope we can. But these are some things we're looking at for safety for all our people at our ballgames. Y'all know this, we're still, this is the number of high school student athletes we have. Pillion's our smaller school, but look at the number of kids that participate. Gilbert, White Knoll, Lexington, Riverbluff, over 3,700. We'd like to keep getting that number up, get that number up in our middle schools. Our job is to keep improving the culture, not only in each individual school, middle school and high school, but across our district. And so we got to keep working on. And y'all know we've got a couple of good rivalries. When Gilbert and Pillion play each other, y'all know that's a good rivalry. I've been to several of them. We stand on the court, we stand on the field. When Lexington and Riverbluff play, it can be in tiddlywinks, and they're all trying to win, you know? I've learned this, you better be standing on the winning side at the end of that game, no matter what the sport is. We want to keep improving the culture where when we play each other in the playoff game, those kids are pulling for each other rather than pulling against each other. That's our challenge because it's a great rivalry. And I'm going to tell you this, through all the years of doing this in athletics college and high school, going on 35 years, we're blessed. We are truly blessed in this district. And that's why kids are wanting to get in this district because of the people and the teachers. And so we thank you for what you do. Because athletics, it's about academics and arts and athletics. And I don't know about y'all, but if you played any sport, you learn a lot from your coaches. You learn a lot from your teammates. That's why we want to have more teams where we have more kids involved, they learn lessons for the rest of their life. Because even when the bell rings, a lot of teaching goes on after that bell. Thank y'all very much. Any questions?
So I guess one of the confusing parts for me has always been B-team this or C-team that, or whatever it may be. It seems like it's very dependent upon the sport. Does this kind of seek to unify that to where essentially there is no B-team or C-team? It's now middle school, and however that may be designated?
Well, in football, see, it all goes back to, it's kind of like in football, you start doing your techniques. All that was passed down from old Bear Bryant at Alabama. A six technique, a seven, a four I. Same thing in C-team for football, but in baseball, it's called B-team. So it can be very confusing. But what we would love to do down the road is have, I think, Dr. Little's wife in the grocery store. Mama said, there's 42 girls trying out for volleyball at Pleasant Hill. They're going to keep 12. And that breaks your heart because we had 12 on the seventh grade team and 12 on the eighth grade team. We're keeping 24. So that's what we want to do. We want to continue to grow it. And it can be confusing, Doc.
So you're saying divide by grade level. So seventh grade has a team, eighth grade has a team? Okay, okay.
That way, we get more, get more kids participate.
Yeah, absolutely.
That could be a life changer for a lot of those kids. I mean, if you miss that one opportunity, you don't try again.
That's right.
So this is very commendable.
Well, thank you, Coach Bennett, and thank you, Jamie. We hope you've learned something since you've been here. We're glad to have you come back. And when you graduate, you just call Mr. Stacy right there and put your job application right in. Dr. Little?
Thank you. All duties, all day, after dark.
AD, AD, AD.
All day. I just wrote it down, after dark. That's good.
All right. Thank you so much. Now, again, I thank you so much, Coach, for your leadership in middle school athletics. That's probably been one of the biggest shifts in terms of conceptualizing athletics.
I love it.
Is that our middle schools, we just do it differently, and we need to make some tweaks to it because we just, I think the feeling is that we just don't have enough kids participating in the middle school level. We need more kids participating at the middle school level. It is solely about two, it's about the kid in the seventh grade that's, you know, 4'11" and 75 pounds. By the time they become a junior high school, they might be 6'3" and 250 or something. Or you see, you see that person that is the 13th-best kid, and they don't get an opportunity. And as our middle schools grow, and this is something that we talk a lot about in terms of middle schools, I want to be, I want to be clear about this piece. So when you, when you talk about big middle schools, so Mediglin Middle at 1,200, and you have, Beachwood will not be far behind, and Pleasant Hill will catch back up, and those three in particular. But you also have Gilbert's growing and, you know, White Knoll's growing. Guy talked about that. You see this stuff happening. Lexington Middle School will be a very large middle school, too, again. If our kids don't feel connected at the school and our kids, you know, are anonymous at the school, then our growth becomes our detriment. Right? So what we want to be able to do is even though we're growing, we're still understanding and acknowledging each individual child. And middle school athletics is a way to do that. Fine arts obviously is another way to do that. And we want to get participation up across the board in all those programs. So, you know, Coach talked about when, when the school bell rings, there's still a lot of teaching that gets done. Well, there's a lot of that when you go out to the band field. There's a lot of that when you go and you're in the drama club. And there's a lot of that when you're going and you're, and you're playing volleyball or, as Naomi's doing, playing softball and basketball. And, I mean, those are, those are essential elements to our program, and we want to make sure that we have more participation across the board. Because I think about kids, and I don't know about y'all, but my middle school experience was tough. It was hard. It was hard being the third child and, you know, in the seventh grade, and, you know, your feet were bigger and, you know, you were tripping and all this kind of stuff. And you, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it was, it's an awkward time. I don't mean to like have my, you know, true confessions of a superintendent here, but, I mean, but it is a very awkward time for our kids, and they need to be connected across the board. They need to be connected in sports. They need to be connected in fine arts. They need to be connected in academics. And this is our way of beginning that process. Now, again, we're still beginning. We are still in the beginning phases of this. It'll be the following year that we'll probably see some budget ramifications to that. It'll be the following year that we'll probably see some, some budget ramifications to that. But we want to really study this and, and get down into the nitty-gritty about kids being a part of their school and being connected and known throughout the whole campus.
And Dr. Little, I just want to reiterate that. As of three weeks ago, I will never have a middle schooler again. But you're right, middle school is so weird and awkward and challenging and the more we can do to make sure every kid has a place, whether it's on robotics or archery or student government or mock trial or art or band or orchestra or football or basketball. I think that is so important for their self-esteem and their motivation to go to school and to, you know-
No doubt about it.
Because there's, there's a coach that's expecting them to be there. Or there's a, a robotics teacher that's expecting them to be there. I mean, I just think that is so very important. So, I am so glad to see that we're doing this because the more places we can create for these students, especially at our school, at our middle schools that are getting so large. I mean, you're right, it is so easy for a middle schooler to walk down the hall with their head down and nobody knows they're there.
That's right.
And, and that's, that just breaks my heart. So, thank you for doing this.
Also, from when I was a working mom, when my girls were in middle school and my children went from daycare to nothing. And all of a sudden, they're coming home from school because they age out of daycare and if they don't have after-school activities, they're just kind of home. And that's a really strange, that gap. And I think this, well, I think the parents will love it because it helps them, you know, go merge that gap from daycare to just, you know, there's nobody at the house until 5:30 or 6:00. And it gives the kids, they're not just gaming and watching TV and it gives them something to do with adults present. So, I, I think it's great.
Good deal. Thank you very much, Coach, for all that and we appreciate all your effort and all you do for our, for our kids. And now, let me brag on Coach Bennett for just a second. You know, the one thing, you can never question Coach Bennett's heart and about where his priority is because his priority is all about the kids. And if you have any conversation with Coach Bennett, at some point during that conversation, he's going to tell you it's all about the kids. And so, thank you, Coach, for all of your work. All right. Mr. Caldwell, I believe you have, you want to talk, talk us through-
Wait a minute. Mr. Caldwell has the next three items? I have a Laura bar. I can break it into 40 pieces if we all need a snack.
I think he's just going to highlight some of these pieces since they're a first read for the board. Mr. Caldwell, you had talked about the tobacco policies.
That was my first idea. Three very uplifting, riveting presentations.
Never going to talk about tobacco.
So, I'm going to keep that torch going. If I may, Dr. Little and Madam Chair, members of the board, if I could combine with your permission, these three items into one. It is about the updates to our tobacco policy. In April, the Youth Access to Tobacco Prevention Act of 2006 was updated and we were mandated to make some changes and have those in place by August the 1st. You will notice that the, when you look through your packet, that the, there are three separate policies. One called ADC Tobacco-Free School District, Policy GDED Tobacco-Free Workplace and Policy JICG Tobacco Use by Students. Ms. Hill spoke a moment ago about the School Board Association streamlining the policies. This is not an example of that. Those three policies have the exact same language, whether it's talking about the tobacco-free district or the workplace or for students, it is the exact same language. You will also notice that our original policies that are currently in place, at its heart has the components of the, of the Tobacco Prevention Act from 2006, what the School Board Association has suggested and following the state's lead on that. It has strengthened the language. It's given some, a more precise definition of tobacco products, of alternative nicotine products. It also has the way that we notify our parents, notify our, our schools is more clearly defined, but you won't find a wholesale change in either of the policies. So, I present them all three as one because again, all three have the exact same language and I am bringing those forward to your first reading for your reaction and any questions that you may have and would hope to get an approval on these at our next meeting. So, at this point, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, I spoke with Ms. Hill about it earlier. Is there any chance we could change the heading of these? Because I'll be honest, tobacco-free does not cover what's going on in this day and age.
Well, certainly at the, at the board's pleasure, we could, we could do what you-
We can or is that, that was kind of amended?
Actually, I don't know the answer to that. This is the, this is the model policy, you know, headed down from the School Board Association. In it, it does talk about alternative nicotine products.
Yeah. I mean, to me, it seems like it should be nicotine-free because sometime, I know nicotine's a derivative of tobacco, but I think the issue is the nicotine that is in all the-
So, you're suggesting the policy's name be nicotine-free school district and not tobacco?
Well, I don't know. It just doesn't seem, tobacco just doesn't encompass it.
We can certainly follow up with the School Boards Association. To be honest, they're very honest about the fact that they had to throw this together very quickly to meet the legal requirements because the law passed with a defined deadline for districts of August 1st. So, we can certainly ask the questions.
I know. We were talking to Mr., to Dr. Guyton earlier. I mean, he's seeing this every day, these young, young kids who are juuling and they're addicted to this stuff and it's just, it's, it's happened so fast.
Yeah. And this, this will kind of tie in. Coach, you might want to go ahead and order that pizza. We're going to be here for another. I'm about to preach for the next half hour, so go ahead and get ready.
No, he's not.
So, so one question we've got to answer as part of this policy. And I'll be honest, I don't have the answer for this. So, in here, you mentioned mandatory enrollment, Tobacco Prevention Education or Association Program. What if as a part of that program, there's nicotine gum or nicotine patches that are prescribed to a child less than 18 years of age with a doctor's order or a, I'm not saying Dr. Guyton's order, but with a doctor's order? Can a student come on campus with that gum, with that nicotine patch? And I, and trust me, I know you, you know, you're looking at me like, "Shut up." Because I don't know. I don't either.
I wouldn't have said it that way.
So, that's one question we've got to answer is can a child be allowed to have that on campus? Because that kind of goes to your point of nicotine-free. If you change it from tobacco-free to nicotine-free, we got a, we got a quandary there.
Yeah. I hadn't even thought of that, Dr. Guyton.
So, that's, that's one thing we, we got to think through. The second thing is how do we differentiate or what's the mechanism if there's a suspicion that that jewel doesn't contain a nicotine cartridge but contains a THC cartridge? Because-
Nobody knows.
You won't know. It's going to smell like cotton candy. And there's a reason it smells like cotton candy. And as a parent, you should be completely ticked off about this because there is a absolute industry waging war on your children. You should be ticked off. We'll talk about the fact that they're going to be six miles down the road and if they're listening, I think I would speak on behalf of the board, say, "We're interested to talk to you about how you're going to keep jewels out of the school." I guess this is on YouTube. I don't know. So, there, there's a couple of things to answer there because this is a, this is a real, real problem. I agree that it shouldn't be punishment, punishment, punishment. And, and that's what I like in, in what we see here is that there is a recognition that these children are being victimized. At the same time, they're making a conscious decision to do this and so, there has to be consequence for that. But at the same time, there is somewhat of victim mentality based off of the way the marketing and such has transpired against them. So, you know, bravo to recognition of that. But just a couple of points to, to kind of make notice of.
Yeah. Thank you. I think we're very blessed to have Dr. Guyton and Dr. Powers. And if I could just ask them, since this is first reading, if the two of them will really help us with this because it is, it's, it's coming at us so fast and the kids, they just, I hear all the things they do to get the jewels and how they have the jewels at school and it's just, it's just crazy. They're just, they're really marketing to them. It's really sad. Anyway, thank you. Any other comments or questions about the tobacco policies board? Okay. Anything else, Dr. Little, on your section?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I just, to let you know, I think everybody attend, pretty much attended graduation. It was just absolutely wonderful and I think all of our principals just have it down to a, just a fine science. And I tell you, the student speeches and even Dr. Little's speech, which we heard five times, was, they're just great speeches, just very awe-inspiring. Board, I sent it out to you this week. Dr. Tally so kindly has proposed a school visit schedule for us for next year. She has based that on kind of when we last visited some of those schools. And so, you know, if you'll let us know if that'll work for you. And we're trying to send it out early enough so that everybody can attend because I think the school visits are so important. And lastly, 16.0, our items for board information. We have had an item added here and is, is Ms. Gaskins here? She, oh, she, there she is. She has added 16.3, which will be the grant award report. And how often will we see that, Ms. Gaskins?
Ms. Betsy Crick has done that quarterly.
Quarterly. Okay, great. So, that's going to come through, Ms. Gaskin.